Accountability rule that's been put in place this year. I know there's people here that are in favor of it. There's people here that's against it. So, I think the best thing that we could do is to have a town hall meeting where everyone can get their voice heard. You could get answers from the candidates, so you'll know exactly where the candidate stands on it. That way you can make an informed decision when you go vote. So, first and foremost, I want this to be very simple. And I know there's gonna be different opinions here, but there's no point in trying to shout somebody down. And so just be respectful of their opinion, their process. And I ask anybody to be respectful of yours. I am kind of the de facto moderator. My name's Chuck Harris. I'm not running for any seat, so I don't have a personal interest in this, other than I have my opinion. And I paid for the building, and set the building up, and arranged all this, so we'll kinda go by my rules. So with that, we'll get started. I wanna ask everyone, we've got a few seats up front. If you'd rather sit somewhere else, you can move your seat someplace else. I recommend not up here, but you can do that. Alright, so I ask you now, if you would, would you stand with me? We're gonna do the pledging of allegiance.
... to the flag of the United States of America, and this is the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, you may be seated. I appreciate that. We're here for, you know, one of the most sacred rights we have is to elect the people that represent us. And so that's why we're here. I think it's very appropriate that we started out with a pledge that are in flag. So with that, we'll just get the evening started. If you are a candidate on the upcoming election, what we're gonna do is we're gonna allow the candidate's speech about three minutes, and if you need longer, of course, but to just give their opinion on the accountability rule, if they're for it, why they're for it, if they're against it, why they're against it. Obviously, there's people here, there's candidates that were, that are actively in a lawsuit right now on this. Clearly, they can't be here. And then, obviously, the GOP leadership, they're in a lawsuit. I wouldn't expect them to be here either. I think wisely, they've listened to their attorneys. So, with that, we'll get started. And if you're a candidate, if you wanna come up and sit on the panel, because what's gonna happen, you'll be able to give your opinion, your stance, and then people will come up to the microphone and ask questions. And you can ask questions to the entire panel, or you can specifically ask one person, if it's a candidate in your district or something that you're interested in. So we'll try to keep things moving along. Mr. Forster, glad you could make it. So tonight, we'll have Danny Forster, who is District One candidate. We've got Jimmy Gray, District Three candidate, and Nick Ware, who is the candidate for the chair, which is at large, the entire county will vote on him. There was Ms. Proginsaw, I believe. I don't know her, but...
Oh, I think she's here.
Okay. We do have a couple of chairs up here, if you wanna grab a chair. If you're kind of on the end, if there's a couple of chairs in the middle, you can just get in, let somebody have those. Try to get everybody seated in the camp. And if we need to move a chair, to make two chairs, we'll do that. We're family, and we're just very important tonight. Okay, so, the microphones, gentlemen. My sound engineer, extraordinary, says you push it up two clicks, and it'll be hot, and you have to talk right into the top of the microphone, I found out. So, with that...
Check, check.
There we go. Alright, you're already set. So, Mr. Ware, if you want to give your opinion of the accountability rule, and what did you wanna talk about, about that rule?
Well, I can tell ya, whenever I first heard about it, is that... What? Can you hear me? Is that better? Okay. Whenever I first started speaking back in 2019 at the meetings, people told me that I was too, my voice was too light. I think those two ladies back there, Ms. Willis, told me I needed to speak up, I needed to shout it out if you got to, to make that mic work. And so, if I get a little low, my tone gets a little low, you can't hear me, just do that, okay? So whenever I first heard about this, it was, I guess, around February, and that was whenever, also, the other counties up here in North Georgia area that were doing the same, actually, they were doing it first. I didn't even know Catoosa had, was in on doing this type of thing until, I guess, whenever body else, actually, the sound guy told me. And I stay in a bubble sometimes with my work, with my job. I'm an engineer, so I look at things from a telecommunications standpoint. And so I'm usually looking at drawings and doing things like that, so I kinda get out to go to the meetings, or to record the meetings, or my wife records meetings, or we have volunteers, some here in the room that records meetings in the county for our Facebook page, which is Citizen Sharing Information. So whenever we heard, whenever I heard about this, I thought, ah, well, you know, this is something that's kinda like what Chitoga and whatever the other, yeah, Pickens, Pickens, yeah, was doing. And I thought, well, you know, this is just one of those things, right? So, I think it was a couple of weeks, or before, or whenever the, they came out and said it needed to interview, and that's whenever, I think you were the one that told me on Judy's show at that point. Can you hear it? Okay. It seems to be going in and out, depending on how close I hold it to my mouth. So, that's, and then, we talked about it on your show, Judy, a little bit, whenever I came on your show that one time. And then whenever I was hearing you guys talk about it, I thought that whenever I went to this interview, that it was gonna be kinda like one of those ISIS interrogation tactics, you know? That I was gonna have a hood over my head, and sit in a chair with lights shining in my eyes, and they pull it off, and start asking me all these questions. It wasn't like that. Whenever I got in there, there had coffee, they had donuts, sausage balls, and was very quaint and approachable. And even the other candidates who had went through the process, Mr. Black, who I'm running against, who's your current chairman, had said the same thing in the process, right? And so with, with that, you know, I didn't know what was gonna happen after that, didn't see anything that's happened after that. And then, low, we hope, Monday morning, Monday, Monday, I guess it was, Monday morning, whatever, I planned on going around next time to be able to qualify and do my whole thing. And I did, and some people were telling me that what had happened that morning, that they were not, you know, the candidates were not able to qualify. And then I heard that the, that afternoon or evening, that Mr. Black and the others had went and, I guess, had filed at the courthouse, or whatever, to be able to have their thing on Tuesday morning, or their hearing over in Walker County. And then I had some insight into that. Someone that was there at that told me who all was there, and how that all went down, and how the other people were not there. And then I seen a lot of people that were saying that they didn't show up, they didn't show up. And then I found out that they weren't served yet. So, it's kinda hard to show up if you haven't ever been served for court, to come to court. So I think they got that kinda mixed up, or whatever, and so then they finally served them, I believe that was on a Tuesday, or Wednesday, or something like that. And so I'm telling you all of this, because this is what I've been, this is my lens, this is what I've been viewing. And a lot of you probably haven't heard too much of me, because I'm slow to speak. I like to take in all the information first. And actually, I wasn't gonna be here tonight, because I had another event, but it canceled on me, so that meant that I was probably supposed to be here. I think God has provisions for us in our lives, and He makes those ways and paths that we travel, and that's why I'm standing here with you tonight. So, Wednesday, I believe, I find, find out that there's another hearing, and that hearing was for the judge, yes, to tell them that they were gonna be on the ballot, or no, that they had to put them on the ballot, so, or face the fines, or maybe that was Thursday, or face fines, high, hefty fines, right? And then on Friday, they went back that morning, and then the judge had said, well, we're taking it out of your hands, we're gonna put these candidates on the ballot. And that's whenever it went through with the, he told our election authorities to put them on. So I waited, and I've read all the information. I've read all the information that was submitted by the defendants, and by that of all of the candidates that were not put on the ballot. I've read through all of the information as far as the minutes go, from that Friday morning and Thursday morning. So the documents that were in the court, that were put forth, I've read them all, and I've looked at it from where I would stand, if I was ever elected, to be in the position of this county of chairman, of representing the people. And so with much prayer, consideration, research, and looking at this from fifteen different ways till Sunday, I've come to realize that there's something that I, and every candidate that goes before the people, and are elected in this county, in this state, and in this country, must first have to gather and put to the forefront to say, I will pledge, I will take and defend this. This is my oath. This is what I must do, is I must, in the position that I would be elected to do, is to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Georgia. I don't have to uphold and defend anyone's opinion. I don't have to uphold and defend my own personal opinion. But I must say that I must do this, because that would be my oath, is to defend this Constitution of the United States and of the State of Georgia. So as I look through this, and which I've read it several times, and then I look at this and I compare it to biblical law, I see where the will of the people, and we just went through, going through Samuel right now, where the will of the people were underneath God. And God gave them that free, freedom of just being, Him being the king, Him being the ruler, Him being the governing authority. But the people wanted a king, and so He finally gave them one. And they went underneath that authority. I'm very thankful that God has erected this nation, and to being able to have a document that we are under, that this document here, for our republic, that guarantees us a republican form of government, not a democracy. In our founding documents, this document right here, the word "democracy" does not even exist one time. It does not exist in that of the first document, with that of the Declaration of Independence. Where it does exist is in a letter that was written to get the people to come together by James Madison. And that was the Federalist Paper Number Ten. And in Federalist Paper Number Ten, James Madison says that a pure democracy is as short in its life as it is violent in its death. It was told one time to me is this, there's a difference between a republic form of government and a democracy form of government. And it's posed to me in this manner, that if you look back in the eighteen hundreds, where a guy goes in and he robs a bank, him on horseback takes off, and they get a posse in town to take off after. So they get out, they catch up with this guy that's robbed the bank, robbed all the people's money, and he, he says, okay, what should we do with him? Says, I know, we'll vote. Let's hang him. Everybody raised their hand, they hug him. That's a democracy. Now, for the republic form, the same thing happens, the guy rides out, the posse catches up to him, they all vote to hang him, once again, but the sheriff is there. And the sheriff says, no, he'll stand trial before his peers, based upon that of the law that governs, and that of the Constitution. That's the difference. And what we have here in our First Amendment, no matter what opinions we may have, what I believe is that what they did, they are afforded to do by this, whether I agree or whether I disagree. Now it's up to that of the law to look through that same thing. And as we looked, as I looked at a lot of the law that they had, there was one candidate back in nineteen ninety-two named David Duke, who wanted to run for president. But he was a grand marshal KKK guy. Well, the Republican Party told him, we're not, we're not letting you represent us, we're not gonna let you stand up there and represent us, and have our republican name with your name of hate, of racist. And so, they didn't let him on the ballot. The Republican Party of the State of Georgia did not allow this man to be on the ballot. He went to court. It took four years, and in nineteen ninety-six, they said, he is, that, that, the Republican Party is protected under the First Amendment. And to that, I have to say, I gotta stand on law and principle, and at the Constitution, and not of my opinion, and not of what anyone else would say to influence my decision in this, is based upon that, and has always been, in, with law and governance, in that of the Constitution. That's what we have to go by. That's what created this country. That's what we pledge allegiance to, the republic. And that's all I got, God in me to do. If not, then what else we got? We don't, we're all Americans, no matter what. And even if we have these tribal badges that we wear all the time, that puts us in these corners. You know, today, there was something that happened, or actually, it happened on Saturday. There was a, there was a mass ejection of the sun.
Mr. Ware, excuse me, but we were trying to hold this for about three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Anyways, just so y'all know, there was a mass ejection that happened, and it was a G3 event. G5 events are really bad. But all it takes is one G5 event and the sun, and all this power goes out, all these systems go down, and everything happens, we're all on the same level again. And we've really gotta be looking for the future, of how we can come together, and how we can be a people, and stop separating, and become that United States Americans. Thank you.
Mr. Forster, would you like to give your opinion in about three minutes or so?
Sorry, I didn't hear the three minutes, Jeff.
No, that may not have coached you.
Well, thank you for personally inviting me, and to give my opinion, but I wanted to take about a half an hour. I'm Danny Forster. Born right here in Port-au-Prince, and I was pretty much called to run against Jeff Long last year. I was thinking, you know, I'll run against Jeff Long. And then, he had somebody run against him, Michael Green. So in January this year, I'm sitting in the shower, and I said, Lord, you got somebody running against him, it's Michael Green, why are you doing this to me? And I said, okay, Lord, I'll do it. And I did. On February the fifth, I think it was, I went down and gave my intention to run against Jeff Green, I mean, Michael Green and Jeff Long. February the eighth, I got an email that said, you must go to the Republican Party Building and qualify as a Republican, because if you don't qualify as a Republican, you can't run as the Commissioner for District One. That's what it said. And in that, it quoted OCGA 123-2153 Georgia State Law, that the Republican Party had that ability. Actually, in the law, I think it says "party." It don't say independent, it don't say Democrat, it don't say Republican. It just says "party." That party has the ability to say whether you can be a Democrat. That party means it has ability to say whether you can be a Republican, if you're gonna run for an office. And I thought, wow, that means this is law, so I gotta go do it. So I went and did it. And it said, in a week from now, they said, in a week from now, we're gonna tell you whether you're a Republican or not by 3:00 PM on Friday. I got a call, and they said, we qualified you as a Republican. I said, fantastic, thank you very much. And that was the end of that. About seven o'clock that night, I get a call from Benita Hollander, because we're friends. By the way, I'm a commander of post forty in Ringo, Georgia, and that is in District Three. Benita Hollander, I called on her many times, and she helped the Legion out with regard to flooding and stuff, and there was going on, and I also got to know Mr. Mark Vaughn, the Ringo City Manager. Became members, the Legion became members of the Catoosa County Chamber, and so I got to see a lot of people that's in here at the Chamber meeting, and associated with other members. We even took pictures at the openings of different businesses and ribbon cuttings, so I got to meet some of, and met Jeff Long. In the past, I never went to any of the district meetings up until February, when I started saying, you know, I was gonna become a Commissioner. So anyway, the phone call from Benita Hollander, she said, did you get selected as a Republican? I said, yeah. I said, yeah, and then we started talking, in my mind, thinking, well, you did too, I mean, why, why are you thinking maybe that you didn't wanna see three people running against Jeff Long, you know, what's going on here? And so, in the conversation, I kinda got an aha moment. She did not get selected as a Republican. And I said, Benita, you didn't get selected as a Republican? She said, no, I did not. I haven't got the call. It's seven o'clock at night, it's after three. She said, neither did Larry Black, Stephen Henry, or Jeff Long. Ooh, I'm missing, okay. And it shocked me. And I thought, you know, like the other county, yeah, this is going on, it's being implemented, we're doing, our Republican Party, of which I'm now a member of, I paid my twenty-five dollars, and I went to a convention meeting. And when I become your Commissioner, I'll probably be going to more. But I feel that this selection was made by law. The way it was made is not up to me. The way it is made is being legally attended to. That's how I feel. Can I say something more? So, back a long, long time ago, this guy was created. Anyway, I did wanna say that, since, you know, since it's coming up Easter, let me say something.
No.
How many minutes I got there?
You're actually a minute and a half over.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think three minutes is the time.
Okay. Well, in any case, I wanted to say something about Christ coming into this world. He came into this world at the right time. God made it a point for Him to come in during the Roman Empire. And when He came in during the Roman Empire, there was a republic going on. The Roman Empire, actually, the republic was going on before that happened, and it became an empire. So, in, in this word here, I'm gonna quote Timothy, I hope I can, but in this word, Paul is about to be, oh, by the way, he killed a bunch of Christians, and he was selected, you know, to be the disciple, but he said, Timothy, you need to tell everybody about what's going on. You need to tell everybody about God and preach the kingdom, and the kingdom on earth as it is in heaven, like Christ said in Matthew six. Trying to hurry here. But, the republic that was going on, God wants us to immolate, He wants to bring heaven to earth. And with that, we need to do that. We need to bring heaven to earth. After Paul died, about a year after that, the Roman Empire selected Christ.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jimmy Gray. I'm running for District Three Commission seat this year. First, Chuck, thanks for putting this together. We had our back and forth on Facebook that day, I'm rather surprised you did do this, but thank you for doing it. I prepared something to say, 'cause obviously, there's a lot of feelings back and forth. One, you feel very strongly for the voting, or very strongly against. So, this is what I have. People are upset about feeling like their right to vote has been stolen from them. This is what Mr. Harris has stated, as well as many others on Facebook during the past few weeks. But is this true? How many of you tonight plan to vote in the primary election on May 21st? So if your right to vote has been taken from you, you see that you can vote. So, I decided to look online, and see if anybody's been denied a spot on a ballot, and yes, it has happened before. Was anyone in attendance today upset about someone's right to vote being taken away from at that time? One instance has already been brought up tonight, is about the ninety-two with David Duke. He sued the Republican Party and others, and was denied in court. The court found that although Mr. Duke had a First Amendment right to express his political beliefs, the Republican Party has a First Amendment right to freedom of association, and an attendant right to identify those who constitute the party based on political beliefs. The committee, the Republican committee, contends that the district court correctly found that Section 21-2-193A of Georgia Code is constitutional, because the state has a compelling interest in protecting the First Amendment rights of political organizations to define their identity. to define their identity and to select their candidates. When David Duke was denied, it was a panel of three people that made that decision in Georgia out of millions of Republican voters. Duke supporters were not prevented from supporting him, as he could have run as a third-party candidate in the primary, or as a write-in candidate in the primary or general election. Then more probably compelling to me, I ran across a story from November 8th of 2014. Thanks to Judy O'Neil Show, actually, someone had posted it on the comments. I've never heard of this. In this case, a Democrat was denied from running as a Democrat in the next election in Chautauqua County, just right down the street. He was the sole Commissioner at the time, and yet no one was concerned that the right to vote was taken away. The Democrat Party was upset because the Commissioner was photographed campaigning for Republicans. Did the Commissioner sue the Democrat Party? In the story I read, which was a Times Express, they asked him what he was going to do, and he said he had two choices if he chooses to even run again. Either run as an independent or a Republican. Again, the Democrat Party had a right of association protected by the First Amendment, and chose not to associate with that Commissioner. Then I ran across a post from the Catoosa County Republican Chairman in 2014, Jeremy Jones. He was upset about a pending property tax hike, which I was too, and our Commissioner didn't care. He told the Commissioners that if the budget is passed with a tax increase, and the GOP would study the budget in detail, and if they agreed the tax increase was not required, the GOP would not be a rubber stamp for Commissioners running for reelection as a Republican. Who were the ones that were going to make that decision? The Executive Committee of the Republican Party at the time would have. It would not have been anybody in this room. So now you see, it's happened before in Chautauqua County, and it was threatened to happen in Catoosa, and yet no one was upset. So surely, this has been before the Supreme Court. And there's a great post on constitution congress.gov discussing freedom of association. Because quite honestly, before all this, I'd never heard of it. In this post, they state, "Even though the First Amendment's text doesn't expressly identify a freedom of association, the Supreme Court has recognized this right as an indispensable means of preserving other First Amendment freedoms." It also states, "Although many of the leading Supreme Court decisions on freedom of association concern burdens on association, the Court has also upheld that compelled association can violate the First Amendment. For example, in some circumstances, laws requiring organizations to include persons with whom they disagree on political, religious, or ideological matters can violate members' freedom of association, particularly if those laws interfere with an organization's message." This next part really has to do with the crux of what we're dealing with as Republicans in this county. So I decided to look up, see what has happened in Catoosa County that might raise your concerns. 21 years ago, there was a story titled, "Are Catoosa Democrats a Dying Breed?" from NorthwestGeorgiaNews.com. Our former Sheriff, Bill Summers, stated, "The county's standing as a Democrat's stronghold has split. It's more trendy to run as a Republican now." 10 years ago, you had to run as a Democrat if you wanted to get elected in Catoosa County. Mark Fletcher, the lone Democrat on the Catoosa County Board of Commissioner, said that there seems to be a number of Democrats who plan to switch parties next year to take advantage of the GOP popularity.
Why? Why? We'll have time to, you can come up to the mic and ask a question.
But we can look at the two ballots this year and determine why. Plenty of candidates on the Republican side. All right, so. And it goes on. He said that the Republican candidate in District 3 won in part because many ballotcasters voted straight Republican. That might be part of your answer. Benita Hollander said she was born and raised a Democrat, in this story as well. Bill Clark, who served two terms as Republican State Representative, said by the late 1990s, Republican allegiance was too long for the Democrat challenger to overcome. He also said, "There are many county Republicans who were Republican in name only." 21 years ago. That's not my opinion. That was in the newspaper. I didn't write it. Another story from the Times Express titled, "North Georgia Candidates Bolted From Blue", from July 11th, 2012, caught my attention. It also quotes Bill Summers, who retires at the end of that year, that he would held the office for 22 years and been elected a Democrat every time. But this year's sheriff race is different. The five candidates seeking to replace Summers are all running on a Republican ticket, which is a trend in local elections across North Georgia. Republican Party officials say North Georgia is one of the most conservative districts in the country. In an area once strictly blue, almost all local candidates are running red in the July 31st primary election. No Democrats are on the ballot for a local office in Catoosa County for the first time in recent memory. Republicans dominate races in Dade, Walker, and Rifford Counties, with only a couple of Democrats, like this year, vying for local office in each of those counties. Dade County Sheriff Patrick Cannon ran as a Democrat when he beat Democrat incumbent Philip Street in 2004. He actually said that he was only thinking about how he could win, not about what party he aligned with. Four years later, he ran as a Republican. Our then-Catoosa County Coroner, Benita Hollander, switched to the Republican Party this election after winning four times as a Democrat. She says, "I'm the same person I've always been. The National Democratic Party just seems to be moving away from the local party. I don't have anything negative to say about the local Democrat Party." So you'll see there have been politicians that switched parties to help with winning elections, and not by truly transforming their views and policies. What should any political party do to protect themselves from being taken over from people who do not support their political platform? Today, we have candidates who claim they've always been a conservative Republican, even though we know they have ran and been elected as Democrats in the past. We also have at least one self-described Republican that endorsed the Democrat candidate for Commission Chairman just a few years ago. We have people who say they're conservative Republicans, even though they voted for tax increases, expanded the Catoosa County budget, infringed on their personal property rights, and even voted for less government transparency. Two candidates have a lawsuit currently against them right now for infringing on a citizen's First Amendment right during a Commissioner meeting. If any current Commissioner defends the citizen after he was escorted out of the building.
Nope.
Not a one.
Nope.
This controversy, in quotes, is plain and blunt out of proportion. It's simply a question that each one of you needs to ask yourself, and that question is, do I believe in the First Amendment? If you do, then you realize the government cannot tell you who you have to associate with and what you can say. Then you must ask, do you believe the government can tell any political party who they must associate with? If you think they can, then what's the point of even having political parties? That's it. We're in a fight.
Well, I'll point to Tom to ask this question.
Oh, go ahead. I want you, go ahead.
Are we at that point? Just give me one minute, and Mr. Gray can have a seat. I'm the moderator, but I'm also, I'm also here to speak for the four candidates that were refused. And we've kind of went around the world, we've been back in history, we've been all over the place. But where we haven't been is right here in Catoosa County in 2024, that a group of 16 people in a secret meeting.
There's no secret.
And they were duly elected.
I'm sorry, but we were, again, we're going to maintain the quorum, you can maintain it out in the parking lot. So, there were 16 people in a secret meeting that nobody was allowed to come into, but those 16 people and the candidate. Now, in that secret meeting, that meeting resulted in a secret ballot of those 16 people casting a ballot. Now, the problem I've got is, there are 70,000 people in Catoosa County.
There were three that denied David Duke.
Yes, he did.
He's got me all confused.
When.
You were all given, you allotted for more time. It's now his time.
Well, speak the truth.
Let him talk.
All right. Anytime I say something that's not true, you feel free to stop. 16 people in a closed building, closed to the public, which would be secret, outside those 16 people, they brought in the candidates one by one. Now, here's what really happened.
Mr. Harris, he did not secret, because he named every name of them on the show.
I didn't say their names were secret. The meeting was a secret. So, the folks came in, one by one, they interviewed. Now, just like they were talking about, some groups said, "With David Duke, he didn't meet their criteria. Their criteria was this or that. He didn't meet it." None of these candidates knew what the criteria was. And I'll be honest, none of the 16 knew what the criteria was. Because the Chairwoman of the GOP on the stand in court, and I was there, this isn't stuff I heard, when she was asked, "What criteria was used? What kind of algorithm was used?", she said, "There was none." And they said, "So you're saying it was purely subjective?" She said, "Yes, it was subjective." The definition of subjective is your opinion and how you feel at the moment. There's no proof, there's no solid evidence, there's nothing other than, "I don't like the way you look." Like I've said before, they could have looked like their ex-husband, they could have looked like their ex-wife.
And what's wrong with that?
I just have one question. I'm not doing this to interrupt you or whatever. I'm just, I want to, I am interrupting, but I just want to, instead of going on about secret this and that, what reason would you have passed any of them for upholding the Republican
The question is, why did they deny? Let me get back. So, I think it was six incumbents, six Republican incumbents from Catoosa County that had served, that came through, and they were all approved. It was a sheriff, a tax commissioner, two judges, the court clerk, coroner, I think there were six of them. All six of those were approved. They just flew right on through. There were six challengers that came in with no history, no background, no anything, other than what they said in that meeting, which none of us know what was said. They were approved. There was four people, three current Commissioners, and one ex-Commissioner came in, and all four of those were denied. And that's the only four that was denied. So, that looks to me, I mean, I could understand, I'm a numbers guy. If you look at numbers out of the six, the six Republican incumbents out of Catoosa County, if one of those had got denied, and of the six challengers, one of those had got denied, and then one of the four got denied, I would say it's a numbers thing. That's probably right. It wasn't. It was 100%. If anybody not associated with the Catoosa County Commissioners were denied, or, I mean, were approved, is 100% of the Catoosa County Commissioners were denied. Those numbers don't add up. And you can call it, you can call freedom of association all you want.
The Constitution says it.
Have your, have, where does the Constitution say that? It doesn't say, it's not in the Constitution. It's a First Amendment, it doesn't specifically say that. That's not the First Amendment.
Yes, it is.
That's an opinion of the court. I'm just saying.
You're mistaken, Chuck. I mean, he's over here giving an essay, and he's not got a dog in the fight. He's over here.
You know, I do have a dog in the fight.
That's right.
These people right here. It's 70,000 people.
All of you are voting in vain.
There's, there's 70, when I was elected, twice, I was elected, I was elected to represent the people in my district and the people of Catoosa County. I wasn't represented to, I wasn't elected to be controlled by 16 people. Now, when 16 people put a Board of Commissioner in charge, tell me who has the real power. Does the citizens that voted have the power? No, they don't. Those 16 people own those Commissioners. That's exactly how it works. And that's why we don't do that.
We elect a candidate committee for the Republican Party every few years at the GOP convention. That's who makes and enforces the rules. The same with Mr. Nolan in the back. He controls what goes on in the Democrat Party.
I just wanted to clarify that the Democrats do not do this.
You can't do it. You have two candidates on your ballot. You told me.
You don't, you don't.
Chuck said when they first started, "We want to talk about democracy versus Republican, whatever." He asked everybody to keep your opinion until it was time. Can we please respect him for that?
Now, again, I don't know how much more clear I can be. I'm against this. I think this is wrong. I think it sets a dangerous precedent. Again, the Republican Party, if they don't want me to come to their party and eat with them the first Monday at Park before, that's fine. I won't go.
No one ever said that.
But I'm just saying. I'm just saying, don't tell me that I'm a Republican and I can't go on the Republican ballot because you don't like me. And there's no criteria that was used. So, that's not the way it works in America. I'm sorry. That's how it works in Communist and Russia. That's not how we do it here. Now, if you want to get back to the people that vetted these people, the people that decided they're, how, if they were pure-blood Republicans, one of them voted in the Democrat primary in 2020, when President Trump ran. You know, but yet he said in judgment of these people, he said, "You're not Republican enough." The Chairwoman, if we're going back in history, and I wouldn't want to go back that far, the Chairwoman of the GOP has voted Democrat in her past. But that's, again.
Democrat to run against an incumbent.
Well, that's, I wasn't even going to bring that, but, yes. Yeah, she actually solicited a Democrat to run against a Republican incumbent, because she thought the Republican incumbent needed to work harder. That's your Republican Chairwoman doing that. I'm not going to do the personal, get into the personal, what she's done to me.
That sounds like it.
Well.
Why do you want to say to the Republican Party that?
I'm sorry.
Everybody can look right in.
I know, and it seems like they should just not allow you, if you don't want to, they said, "If you don't want to run, you can run independent, you can run Democrat." They told these four Commissioners, "You can run anything you want. You can go anywhere and basically take your people." That's not what the Republican Party is about. So, I'm sorry, it's just simply this. If you believe 16 people should be allowed to pick your Board of Commissioners, then that's the side you're on. If you don't, if you believe the citizens are allowed, then you're on my side. All right, so we've got some people wanting to ask questions. We'll turn the mic on, let you come up.
Just get in line. I guess that's what they're saying, just get in line.
Yeah, if you want to come up and ask questions.
You want us to get in line?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I have a couple of questions. One that would apply to all of you, and one specifically to Mr. Gray, because I live in.
You may have to talk more into the microphone, so people can hear you.
For, I guess. For, I guess this applies to all of you. Well, the microphone. Uh, Mr. Gray and each of you, if you are elected, how can you best assure the citizens of your district that you will represent their best interests and needs, instead of the requirements of the sixteen-person accountability committee that wants the power to remove you from the Republican ba- ballot if you vote against their wishes? And let me ask my other specific question to Mr. Gray. I noticed you're wearing a shirt which reads Rhinos Suck. If you are elected, how will you represent the rhinos in your district who, according to you, suck? Thank you.
Well. Rhinos, in my opinion, do suck. However, this is my fifth town hall. I'm having another one April ninth that the Graysville precinct, I'd love for you to come. And I have invited everybody. And, um, I've answered questions from everybody. I don't say, are you a red Republican, or are you kind of blue Republican? No, I don't, not at my town halls. I'm talking about tonight is about holding people accountable for their, their voting.
When you're wearing a shirt that says Rhinos Suck and you're running as a Republican to represent an entire district.
That's right. My opinion is rhinos suck, because.
Okay, so how will you represent those people that suck? If you are elected to represent a district that may have a.
Oh, there's plenty of rhinos. There's plenty of rhinos, and the main thing is communication. Okay, just like I've said, I've had many town halls, and I would continue to have town halls after being elected. I think this is Chuck's first town hall since being elected.
Well, please answer the question.
This is my question, this is my answer, it's more communication and, and explaining what's going on within the district and the county. Okay, there, there is no communication right now. And even when you go to the board of commissioners and ask a question, you don't get an answer. Okay? And so the, the other part, what was your first part?
If you are elected, how can you best assure the citizens of your district, each of you, that you will represent their best interests as a district and needs, instead of the requirements of the sixteen-person accountability that, committee that wants the power to remove you from the Republican ballot if you vote against their wishes?
You're not voting against their wishes or for their wishes. You're, no, you're not. When you're elected, you're going to be there to, to elevate the Republican platform. You're, 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 you're voting your Republican principles, and therefore you're going to strengthen the whole community.
May I follow up and specify what I mean? If there is an issue, and you feel like, if I vote this way, this is what my district needs, but if I vote that way, the accountability committee is going to lock it, which is going to be in our court.
But if you ever have that vote, because I've been in the Republican meetings, when a elected representative was there and, and was facing a hostile group, okay? And he stood up, he explained why he did what he did, and, and I gained all kinds of respect for him. I didn't, you know, I don't think that an elected official should run from situations like that. You should defend why you did what you did, and if you can't, then maybe you shouldn't have done it.
I don't think you answered the question.
Yes, I did, because if you elevate, if you elevate the Republican platform with lower taxes, less government, more personal freedom, you're, everybody is going to win. And on that, I would agree. That's, that's, everyone benefits whenever we, whenever we have that freedom. And to your question, I mean, there's multiple little areas within government that has the effect of the multitude. One being the budget. Whenever you look at the budget here, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four, from two thousand nineteen, it was twenty-eight million. Now it's forty-two million in five years' time. That in fact affects every property owner, every senior citizen, every person that is disabled in our communities. That's the least of, right? And those are the ones that we have to be concentrated on, and even having the services that would be there to give them a route. A need for transportation. The least of. And so whenever you look at the least of, it helps everyone else, right? Because knowing that the property taxes that this senior is paying, let me make this, this widowed senior is paying. If you focus on her and her property, then you know that everyone else will benefit. Because. I'm sorry? Yeah, that's a state issue.
No, it's everybody's issue.
Where does that, I, the county doesn't.
Everything is going up, because we've got a nut in Washington.
Sure. Sure, the nut in Washington is not in my power, except for in the voting booth, that's it. And I appreciate that, uh, any, any, anything that you have, but that's, we have to look at it as a togetherness. And whether you've got harsh feelings for me, like maybe this gentleman has by the way he's looking at me, or you don't. The thing is, is that you've got, you've got to realize, we've got to come together. And if you don't start laying it down, then there'll come a time of reckoning whenever, someone will make this. Someone will have it to, here, and that's God.
Mr. Whistler.
That's God that's going to be coming with.
We got more people, we got more people wanting to ask questions. Mr., uh, Corstler.
So, Dennis Corstler, District One, you're District One Commissioner. Uh, I'll be representing, uh, you, um, actually, there'll be five people, only five people representing seventy thousand people. Uh, but of the three thousand voters in my district, I will be representing them with regard to the fire department, roads, uh, the police department, and their health and safety and well-being. No matter whether they're a Republican or a Democrat. That's what I'll do. Uh, lately, uh, the splosh was voted in, we're going to give about ninety-six million in the next six years. A lot of it's going to be for sewers, I expect calls with anybody that don't want the sewers. Uh, I expect calls with your road conditions, I expect calls whether the fire department came when they were supposed to. I expect calls whether, uh, an officer of the patrol with our police department or the Cudess County Police Department didn't come.
So my question is, for every single person that signed up to be a Republican, did you sign a commitment sheet stating that you would support the Republican principles? I think that's just a show of hands. All right. If you don't do that, and the people are outraged by it, which they are, and they're tired of people saying, yeah, I represent you and your party's belief, but my voting record, my history, what I do, how I treat people in this seventy thousand person community doesn't get addressed, then you can bet, we're going to talk to the GOP and we're going to let them know how dissatisfied we are that a rhino is representing a Republican. And as a result of that, the GOP started vetting, which is absolutely the only true function that the GOP does, is select and qualify Republicans. Not everybody gets to be that Republican. And I, for one, am a hundred and ten percent behind it, and I am a hundred and ten percent tired of the deep state telling me one thing when it's crystal clear that it's something else. All you have to do is look at the histories of the people who have been denied, and it is crystal clear why they're denied. And they're not denied an opportunity to run for office, they're denied from getting to be a Republican candidate. And if you don't like it, the Democratic chair's here, and I know he's desperate for people. And you can run as an independent, if you want to walk on both sides of the aisle. But if you want, want to walk on the Republican aisle, and you signed an oath and say you do it, then just do it. Man up, get behind it, do what you have to do to fulfill your obligation, because that's what the voters expect. The people who aren't in this room, who are going to vote the party line, are going to expect a Republican in November, and I say that our GOP, for the first time in a long time, is about to give them some. Since I was the only one. Since I'm the only one on the board of commissioners.
It does not matter.
Ma'am, again, if you want to have your.
Hold up. Everybody, there's a question here, let the moderator do.
You can take your town hall outside again, I've, I've given you that opportunity, and you can run it. But in here, we're going, we're going to go by what we say. Now, since I'm the only one that was on the board of commissioners during that time, I assume most of that was focused to me. I've signed, I've signed a loyalty, the reason I don't run as a Democrat or an independent is I'm not a Democrat or an independent. Got nothing, nothing personally against the Democrats. They don't, they don't, they don't follow the same principles I follow. Now, I'm going to have to assume that because nothing's been said, other than a, one of the group's, uh, GRA spokesperson, who said, we, the board of commissioners raised taxes, that's not, that's not Republican, they stole property owners' rights to have chickens, uh, and they, what was the, oh, forced vaccination. So I don't think anybody in this room was forced to get a vaccine. For the first time since zoning came in and residential, we, this board of commissioners made it legal to have backyard chickens. And you can, you can say what you want to about it, but we went through that process, we heard both sides of it, and we came to a good conclusion, a happy medium that would allow, it, it, I'm sorry. We, we, the people that live on either side of you, if you're in a subdivision, they probably don't want chickens. And so, I'm sorry. We live in America, and we live in a community that we have to follow guidelines to make sure. There was, let me tell you. We have, we got the lady here that's been very vocal, you came up on several occasions, and you said, please, we want chickens, let us have chickens, right? Let us have at least chicken, six chickens, because that's how tractor supply sells them. I've never bought chicken, I don't know how they're sold. So we started, I use, I, what she said, I use that as a starting point, to try to develop, develop an ordinance to allow resident, our one folks to have chickens, because I think it's important. That, that's, you're right, but we try not to infringe on your neighbors' rights. So we came up with, with a solution to allow, even if you're a small lot up in Lakeview, you can still have chickens. If you have an acre, you can have more chickens. If you want unlimited chickens, go get a farm. We made that, we even made that free, to where you, if you had over three acres, we didn't have to pay the zoning, to rezonate. We did everything we could to make that a fair process. As far as raising taxes, yes, one time in six years, after the pandemic and with inflation that, that drove road paving from two hundred thousand dollars a centerline mile to four hundred thousand a centerline mile, we had to raise millage rates slightly. But if you look at, if you like, look at Cudess County, our millage rate and Walker's millage rate is virtually the same. So, just slightly, Walker's a little bit less, but then Walker gets an extra one percent on sales tax for piece wise. Walker also charges you fourteen cents a square foot from your house in order to have sheriff and fire service. So that's, that's not done by Cudess County. When you figure it all in, Cudess County has a much lower tax rate. But the bottom line is, there's, there's not one criteria for Republican. And I'm not here to stand up for the four that did not get picked, I'm here to stand up for the seventy thousand. I'm here to speak for them. But I'm standing up for the citizens that want to vote Republican and don't want sixteen people in a secret meeting telling them, this is what a Republican is, and this is your choice. Again. I'm sorry, I'll let you go.
So a couple of things here, first of all, I'm going to really appreciate it, to see people come out. Unlike y'all, the three commissioners and one, uh, one past commissioner have not shown up to Republican Party meetings, not in the past year. They haven't showed up to the Republican Party convention, county convention last year, or this year. The people that do show up, they get to vote on who runs for Republican Party, they get to vote on platform, and you can absolutely bring from the floor pieces of, points of interest that are not on the Republican county platform when you go into that convention. I know, I did it twice this past week. Now, you go to Republican Party convention, you vote on who the Republican Party leaders are. Those leaders then decide how we're going to make the polls and what we're going to do. So there's no vote being taken away from anybody, that's a lie, that's the first big lie. The second big lie is all the commissioners that are currently incumbents get to run as an independent without having to qualify at all. The past commissioner has to qualify just like any other independent. If you can't qualify, if you can't come up with signatures, why are you on the ballot? Why do you feel that you should represent a party just because you said you want to be on the ballot? After all, Chuck, who, how do you pick your friends? There's my friends, right? So how do you pick your friends?
I'm a little subjective.
Right? How do you pick your friends, sir? Yes, sir. Does anybody tell you you have to justify who your friends are? No. So why do you think that's okay for the Republican, to try and make the Republican Party justify who is going to carry the Republican name? So my question is, with the fact that no vote is stolen, you still get to go vote in the, in the general election for people to qualify. You get to decide who are your friends, but you want to hold people to a different standard as to how they can hold their friends. My question is, is if you want to be counted as a Republican, over the past year, why can't you come to meetings? You've only been to one, and you're an exception, because all the rest of the commissioners.
Well, actually, I've been, I've been to many more than one.
Uh, not in the past year, because I've been all the time.
Yeah, but before that, I was.
That, that's fine, I can testify.
We go back in history.
I'm not going to.
But I want to, I want to point out one thing you said. How to pick your friends, that's right, and that's what this is all about. This is about sixteen people picking their friends.
Sixteen elected representatives.
These are not.
They're not admitted, wrapped themselves in the Republican Party.
These are not, these are not elected representatives, these are people that's in a sma- no, they're not.
The leadership of the Republican Party is elected.
They're not, they are not elected representatives.
The leadership of the Republican Party is elected.
They were elected by forty or fifty people, forty or fifty of their.
And if you show up at the meeting and bring thirty or forty people, and you make a motion from the floor, you can be in charge of the Republican Party too.
And that's the problem. That is exactly the problem, you can, if you bring forty people, you can take over the Republican Party, and you can put who you want in as a commissioner, and that is the danger of this whole thing. Before, a bunch of crazy people could take over the Republican Party, but guess what? You all still got to vote for your Republican candidate, it didn't matter that much.
They had no backbone. So, nobody up here, I am, I'm going to speak to myself, for myself.
You certainly don't speak for me, let me tell you.
Well, I'm speaking for myself. I did not know one person within the GOP organization here in Cudess County when I decided to run for office, and I had sure as hell was not going to let one of them stop me from doing so either. I am convinced that I'm the best candidate for my county or my district, and I'm going to do every damn thing I can to make that difference. I am not going to sit here and let you continue to lie, say secret sixteen, sixteen, your vote is this, that. The whole thing, we have different levels of the Republican Party that is elected, and there wasn't forty or fifty, there was probably a hundred and fifty at the last convention. You weren't there, so you can't say what happened, okay? And. Those sixteen people were not there. My stepmom is a precinct chair, I was a precinct chair. You know how I got that position? There were six people in the precinct caucus, six, out of the whole Graysville precinct. If you want to be a precinct chair, that's probably the easiest damn thing you can do in this county.
One person, one person, let LFO show up.
What?
You had a guy that's one of your, one of your people in your little group, that put his hands on a man's wife when they went down to qualify.
I watched that video, and I showed it to my wife, who doesn't know anybody, nothing like that happened. He bumped. I'm not defending Dana. I'm not here to defend him. I'm here to talk about this accountability role. And if you don't think people should be held accountable, then that's, that's the end of this. I hold my employees at work accountable. I expect my party, our elected officials that say they are members of our party accountable.
Can I just reply to one thing you said? I'll be quick. I'll be real quick. Well, yeah, I can. I didn't, I'm sorry. That was, that was asked. Just really didn't, I didn't ask your opinion or your permission. But like he said, and he's exactly right. The precinct chairs, that is the easiest thing to get elected to. There's nothing to it. You can easily get elected as precinct chair. Those easy to get elected as precinct chairs had the majority of the vote with the secret 16. That was 10 votes out of 16. So, that easy to get elected with no qualifications other than, "Yeah, I'll show up." That's what picked your candidates for the May primary.
Listen, and one thing, just, I'm not going to debate. I'm just going to state. My stepmom recused herself from every District 3 candidate. That's right.
So, my question is, my question is, how do people understand that vetting is used at all levels in the Republican Party here in Georgia? The people who appeared on the presidential preference ballot were voted on by a committee of 23 in the Republican Party. 23 people in the state Republican Party in Georgia voted on who was going to appear on the Republican Party ballot. 23. Not the millions of people in Georgia, but 23. Here in Catoosa County, there was a vetting process. There was a committee of 16, then an executive committee, and then precinct chairs that voted. And if we don't have a problem with us doing this at the state level, if we don't have a problem with 23 people at the state level picking who our Republican candidates are, then why do we have a problem with 16 people who actually took the time to affiliate themselves with a party, determined they wanted to be part of that party, became involved in that party, and said, "I swear fealty to the platform upon which this party stands." How are they not qualified to determine who actually embodies the principles set forth in the Georgia Republican Party platform? Who is, who's better qualified? Is there anybody here who's better qualified to determine that? So, I just ask.
But, yeah, I'll tell you who's better qualified. The voters of Catoosa County are better qualified. Let's just say that this is, what criteria did they use?
The Georgia Republican Party platform.
Nope.
That is exactly what they used. They used the Georgia Republican Party platform. I spoke to you about that in the last commission meeting. You looked at it and you said, "Yes, I agree with all 20 of those."
I agree with all 20.
Yet, you are trying to force people to associate with you.
Nope.
Because they, they say you.
You don't have to like me. You don't have to associate me.
You don't.
You don't have to be my values. But I can assure you of this.
You are trying to violate First Amendment rights.
When I vote for something on the Board of Commissioners, I vote for the best interests of the citizens, not for my best interests. Now, I've voted for stuff before. If I was voting for Chuck, I'd have voted no. I'd have voted, "Heck no, I'm not doing it." I voted for what was best for our fire department, best for our sheriff's department, best for our road department, best for the citizens that depend on those services. Yes, I vote what's best for the citizens, not what's best for Chuck. I can assure you of that.
And without regard to the Republican Party platform.
I'd like to, I'd like to say something on behalf of the question with regard to the Republican Party. I mentioned before to your answer about what a commissioner should be doing. And with regard to the, with regard to my opinion, I didn't get to vote on the CHI Memorial being built up here as a commissioner. Was that a voting process to put the hospital out here?
No, it was CHI Memorial, owns that property.
So, they.
It's their, it's their property.
Okay. So. There was a vote on the $40 million revenue bond though. So, there was some action that the commission did do to help this hospital being built? No?
But we did, yeah, we did a lot of actions to help.
The money involved, you willing to comment on that?
They had fundraised throughout the committee.
I'm sorry, but if you review the videos from December, December of 2022.
With citizens of the.
You go to December of 2022 and you look at the video, it's about mid-December, okay? You'll see where our government, five panel board, voted for CHI for a $40 million revenue bond. So, in any case, with regard to the CHI hospital being built here, as a Republican, if there was an abortion clinic attached to that hospital, I would not be for it. As a human being and follower after Christ, I would not be in favor of an abortion clinic being at that hospital. I'm sorry, Democrats or independents that don't want to do that, but I do not believe the Republican platform would want that either.
Memorial would have it in hand. I know they're conservative.
Act like so.
Well, I mean, I don't know, really.
Um, what, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I hear many of the speakers saying is that if you don't regularly attend the Republican meetings and you don't volunteer in that six-person circle and are chosen as a precinct chairman, that you don't know as well as that, those few people, which candidates you get to vote for. I feel like those elected Republican Party officials, not government, they aren't government officials, shouldn't be elevated to the point that they represent my choice of who should be on the ballot. I'm not saying any of this because I'm especially enthusiastic about any of the incumbents or candidates. I disagree on the chicken issue. I wish it had gone a different way. I don't think that makes somebody not a Republican and not able to be on the Republican ballot. And I don't think that those people, that somebody said, "Hey, who wants to be a precinct chairman?" But that means they know better than the greater Republican voting pool. And I don't think that I'm less of a Republican because I don't go to every single meeting. I was at the caucus last year and voted for the people that are in there now. No, but there was no mention of, "By the way, we are going to decide this person can't be on the ballot if they vote in a way that we disagree with." If somebody votes different than your opinion about chickens, that's not a weighty enough issue to keep them off of the Republican ballot, especially when the voters of the county have reelected those people as Republicans. So, I think you have to listen to that and give it more weight than the weight of those 16 people. Because if you don't, you are minimizing the importance of the voting public in Catoosa County. They, they may not go to all the meetings, but that doesn't make their votes one bit less important.
I just want to clarify one thing. The precinct chairs are not elected by the six committees.
No, there, you said there were six people in the circle.
Well, that was the Graysville caucus. Yes, it's not the committee.
I know. I was there. I was there last year.
Okay, okay. All right, so.
I understand what you're saying. We sat in a circle with our.
Right.
Voting precinct and somebody said, "Who wants to be a precinct chairman?" It wasn't, they don't have some elevated level of expertise that.
But they gained it, I would say, probably throughout the regular committee meetings.
They shouldn't have more authority than voters who have reelected someone as a Republican.
Well, like I've asked earlier, what, and Chuck didn't answer, maybe you can. Our, our commissioner is Benita, and she was denied. What has she done in the past two years that you're aware of that embraced a Republican principle?
Let me tell you this. I have a very novel idea. If there are three candidates in a district or all the districts and the Republican Party leadership feels like, "I don't like this candidate. They're not Republican enough for me." They should work really hard for their preferred candidate, get the word out how they feel about the one they don't prefer, and let the voters then decide which Republican candidate they want to be.
As a Republican, I expect.
I'll vote against Benita if I feel like she did not do what she should have done.
But as I mentioned in that news story, many voters vote straight Republican.
Okay, voters have the right to be informed.
They do.
Idiotic, make bad decisions, vote for the wrong person.
But my GOP committee does not.
Exactly. I don't want that little committee deciding, "We know better than these uninformed voters, so we're going to take that option away." That's not right.
But have you tried, have you contacted anybody within the committee?
I'm very close friends with several people in the committee, yes. We disagree, we couldn't disagree more about this. I think they're good people. I think they're smart people and I think they're doing what they think is right. Standing up in front of people and talking like this is my worst nightmare. That's how strongly I feel about this. I do not want a small group of people deciding that someone or several someones that have been reelected as Republicans can't even be on the primary ballot. I don't want a primary before the primary that 16 people decided. There shouldn't be a pre-primary.
Let me, let me, let me take myself up. Like, if I was not running, I would still feel this exact same.
I believe you.
And, and if I was how I was two years ago, when I did not pay attention, I knew my taxes went up or down.
I paid attention.
Well, I mean, that's, that was my level, okay? I've never been to a commission meeting before.
But it doesn't matter.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that I want.
How can you be, how can you be a commissioner if you never went to commission meetings?
Well, you've seen, you've seen me at plenty, Chuck. Come on down.
But you didn't go to enough, so you're not a real commissioner candidate.
I think it's great that you've gotten.
But, and as far as the chicken issue, that should have never been passed as an ordinance.
But that's not the point.
It is the point because you have somebody. No, no, I'm just going to tell you, since it was brought up, it should have never been passed as an ordinance because it never came under planning and zoning.
I agree.
And they did it anyways.
And you know how I'll speak to that with my vote.
But I want to know, I voted for Benita last time, twice, because I, I couldn't stand our former commissioner. And he always voted for tax increases and that's why I got into this one 2022, whenever our taxes went up again.
So, you agree that maybe if you didn't know what was best, that 16 people know what is best for all the voters?
I believe, like I told you, my employees are held accountable and I think our elected officials need to be held accountable.
We hold elected officials accountable by voting for or against.
But many people don't.
I'm sorry, I said, "No, I'm not." You could have said it.
All right, there's a lot, there's a lot of discussion about the people that chose the Republican candidates. And I'm just going to say it really simply. There's not a person, well, there might be a few, but there's not very many people in this room that couldn't go, join the GOP, get involved, and do this. It is a greater civic involvement if you choose to do it. The entire Republican Party is based on a platform. It's not based on putting everybody and their brother out there and letting the world vote for them. It's about vetting candidates. That's their primary function is to vet those candidates. And I frankly feel a lot more comfortable with them reviewing people, especially incumbents with a strong voting history, incorporating taxes, limiting property owner rights, et cetera, et cetera. I feel a lot more comfortable with 16 people deciding that four don't deserve to run on the Republican ticket but can still run, they're not eliminating them from running, than five people representing 70,000 who have all signed an oath and clearly lie on a very routine basis about it.
I'll make this very simple. We live in a constitutional republic. My rights are not more important than your rights and not more important than your rights. We have equal rights. You do not get to say, "I don't want chickens," when I want chickens because it would offend your property rights. Too bad. I have them. It's my right. Okay? That is part of being in a republic, all right? Those 16 were duly elected at caucus last year. You don't like it? What I'd really like all to do is come to a meeting. You don't have to pay nothing to come to a meeting. Next year, come to caucus. Elect your chair. Stay for the convention. Elect the leaders. Again, I didn't know either, but now you do. Now you do know. This is how those 16 were chosen. Each district, each precinct elected their chair. You want to join in? You don't like Dana? You live in Lakeview? Come on next year to caucus. Let's vote them out. That's how it works. It's very simple. We would like you, as several members of the Republican Party, to join us. But if you're going to wear those T-shirts, no, because we, we, we go by specific rules.
Well, we do have T-shirts. But. And also, no joke allowed.
All right, we got a gentleman up, we got a gentleman at the microphone.
Hi, my name is Alex Brady. I'm running for District 3 Commissioner as a Democrat. I have one question for each candidate. If you could answer, just a simple yes, no, is what I'm looking for. So, in four years, when the Republican Party committee members, I believe, get reelected, if, if the committee members get reelected and decide not to qualify each of you because they said you weren't Republicans, in four years, if you ran again, would you still support this?
Yes. I played the fifth. I don't know. I mean, it's speculation. Would I, would I protest? Would my feelings get hurt? Would I be offended? No, no. Look, since 2019, I've been going to my government meetings and holding my government accountable. Chuck can tell you because Chuck's always throwing me down for talking about history. But it's if you don't learn from your history, you're destined to make the same mistakes. I think that everyone in this, in this room, if you are a Republican, and I know that there's Democrats in here as well, that you have, and you said yourself, sir, right? That you have an opportunity in this country to start going into a direction to where we come together as a whole and knowing that Republicans do stand for this conservative values and conservative ways. You as a Democrat, you have your ways as well, right? And it may be in a more social area that might actually align with people that are in the Republican, Republican Party. The thing is, is I think Teddy Roosevelt said this, is that people don't care what you think until they know how much you care, right? We got to start caring for our neighbor, man. We got to start caring for people. And if, if I get to a point, if I'm elected and they come to me and they say, "You're, we're holding you accountable now for your actions for the last four years." I've got a woman that I've been married to for 25 years that's been doing that to me. And I'm grateful for accountability. Because if you don't have somebody that's going to hold you accountable, you're destined to make those same mistakes in history.
You didn't answer the question. Yes or no?
You answered it toward the end there.
I did.
Yes or no?
I did answer the question.
Yes.
Then yes is the question. That if they want to hold me accountable, hold me accountable. That's what everybody should be coming to these meetings like I've been doing since 2019, holding your government accountable. Because one of the things was, is whenever I saw George Battersby, when I saw George Battersby get kicked out of the meeting and I saw five people on that board and I saw Chuck actually at the end say, in Commissioner comments, "I don't know what to say." Because Stephen told that man that he is a bald-faced liar.
Okay, you answered the question. You answered the question.
No, sir, no, sir. I've been quiet around here the whole time.
No, you've been quiet, quiet.
And that, and that, and that was what none of the four commissioners stood up for that citizen. And that, and that, and that was what, none of the four commissioners stood up for that citizen. I was appalled to see that there's a citizen in my, in my county that just got escorted out by a policeman, by a sheriff's deputy. And none of men, none, not my, my commissioner, Charlie Stevens, he didn't say anything. Jeff didn't say anything. Chuck didn't say anything. And why? Why? Whenever you have, whenever you have a person that's exercising their First Amendment right for their five minutes of speech, and has called a bald-faced liar by the commissioner, and kicked out with a minute and a half on the clock by a sheriff's deputy, why would no one else on that board stand up for this one individual? You know, that's what the republic's about. It's for the one individual. The one individual that is the lowest of us. One.
Okay, we got, your campaign speech was good, but now we got somebody wanting to ask a question.
And this is another thing. I mean, he always berates me in many ways and a lot of times.
Nick, Nick, I let you, I let you spend five minutes reading us the Midnight Ride of Paul Revere.
Here we go.
I'm just trying to let these people get up and speak.
I just wanted to tell you, men, thank you so much. I think you all independently have done a wonderful job in expressing how you feel and what you represent. I do have a question for you, Mr. Harris. It'll be the first question ever that I would be privy to have an answer to. I've been, been to the board meetings where you sit in your stair and you count down, and you remind us that we're running, or the talk is running out on us. My question is simple. My question is directed to you, and you are one. Do you consider yourself a leader?
No, you asked me that on Facebook.
I did. I want an answer. I don't want everybody else to hear the answer.
Okay, I don't mind. I, I don't consider myself a leader. I didn't run to be a leader. I ran to serve my community, and that's what I do. When somebody calls and there's people on, let me, let me just go back. I don't want it to come across that I don't like the GOP. There's people in the GOP, the Confucian GOP, that I love. I think they're fine people. The majority of them are fine people. But I've been called by, and, and I could name the name, but she's, she's an officer with the GOP, and she's caught up in this, and I hate it. She had a problem. I was out at her house the next day. You can ask her, was the problem solved? I go, that's not a leader. A leader would call somebody else to go do that. I go out there and walk in the mud and see what her problem is with my own two eyes, and figure out how it needs to get addressed. So yeah, in your context, no ma'am, I'm not a leader. When I was the Vice President of Fuller Rehab, I wasn't a leader. I was a servant to the people that got the job done, that took care of the customers. Here, I'm a servant to the people that get the job done, that takes care of the citizens. That's exactly what my job is. If I'm not doing it right, then vote me out. But that's how, that's how I approach my job. I approach my, approach my job as a servant, and that's what I am.
I would suggest that you are a component of a team of leaders that take us through change, hard times, any modification that needs to be, to take care of the citizens, and see that we are served and have what we need. So you consider yourself a servant. Tell me what that means to you.
That means serving the people I represent. It's very simple.
Should you have any...
I don't, I don't lead those people.
Should you have, what kind of qualities should you have being a servant?
Well, apparently you need to ask the sixteen people in the secret meeting.
I'm asking you, Mr. Harris. I'm not, I don't want a smart person.
I have a servant's heart, ma'am.
What is a servant's heart?
Just like you, when you worked for, you worked for the, you took the county's citizens' money, and you worked for them, and you were a servant, you were a servant.
I was paid to run a grant.
Right.
For, for prevention. Underage drinking. I didn't take county's money.
But I'm, we, we took taxpayers' money.
Of course.
Man, what were you? Were you a leader? No, you were a servant. You did a job. And I'm not saying you don't deserve that money.
Excuse me. Answer the question.
What, what is, the question is this.
What is a servant?
A servant is a person that serves the people. The servant is the person that listens to the people and asks them what they need.
What kind of skills does a servant have?
I'm sorry? I've answered every question I can ask. I don't know how much more direct I can be.
Excuse me. Yeah, I just, I just wanna know what, what kind of skills or qualities should a servant have?
A person that has a servant's heart.
A servant's heart.
That cares about the people. Yes, ma'am.
So a servant's heart could look at me in a meeting, eye to eye, when I ask a question, and sit there and count down my time?
Never see me count down your time. That's not my job.
You sit there and did not answer questions I asked all five of you.
I know.
The same questions.
You're talking about, like, right here, if I want to...
I'm not here to debate with you. You're supposed to be answering my question. This is my question.
I'm answering that question.
You can sit back down, and you can answer my question.
But I'm telling you, I'm telling you this. In a board meeting, it's just that. It's a board meeting. It's not a free-for-all. It's not a, you get your answers, your questions answered, because there's too many problems, there's too many people, too many questions. Anytime you wanna get ahold of me, anytime you wanna sit down with me, I'll be glad to talk to you. But when I'm sitting on that board up there, I can't give you a direct answer, because I can't answer for the four guys who are sitting with me.
You never answered any of our questions, save one. And I can repeat that, that question.
I'm just telling you.
The question was asked, are you still coming after the RV camps? And the answer was, yes, we are.
What?
I'm not, ma'am, I'm not lying.
Ma'am, I went to those RV camps, and I said, "Look, every single one of them, I went to them."
We can go back, and we can play this on video, because that was the question that was asked. I'm sorry, I'm done. I got about the same.
I'm gonna introduce myself to you. I'm David Harris.
That's okay.
What's your name?
Okay.
I was just wondering, um, I've been sitting here kind of confused. I'm in high school, so... Hey, um, so I'm, so I'm in high school, so I might be like a little ignorant, but I've been sitting here and I've been kinda confused about like how the whole kicking them off the ballot is different than like the kicking person Trump off the ballot thing.
The courts are what kept, or tried keeping Trump off the ballot. In this case, it's the private political party that decided that the, the people that were denied did not uphold, uphold Republican values.
But how did they get their right to...
They're not, they're not denied the right to be on a ballot. Trump was denied the right to be on a ballot whatsoever. The incumbents, and even Mr. Henry, can run as independents. So they'll still be on the ballot. See, they're putting too much, the politicians are putting too much credit or power on the May twenty-first ballot. That's just a primary election. We, you know, that doesn't, we just have the November election. That's what matters. And, but historically, because we've had so many people jumping ship onto the Republican ticket, that is the election that matters, but it shouldn't be that way. It's been perverted. And that's why the Republicans had to do something to stop people from, just anybody, running on a Republican ticket, regardless of how they vote.
Junior in high school. Thank you for coming up and asking that question. Wow. I wanted to say this, though. I wanted to say this, though. A long, long time ago, there was a Georgia law that was instituted that the Democrat Party, the Independent Party, the Constitutional Party, the, what is there more parties? Republican Party, all are allowed, this is a Georgia state law, all of those parties are allowed to select their candidate.
For those that don't know, I'm retired military, twenty years in the Air Force. Thanks, man. That's not why I said that one. That time was spent supporting independent and constitutional. Chief among that, and my belief is the First Amendment, it's there for a reason. I've been a lot of places for it. That was not an option, and life isn't good there. That protects you, the citizen, from the government imposing against you, not, "I don't like your shirt, that doesn't matter." Your First Amendment, those rights don't affect my opinion, it affects imposing from the government. The precedent that this is setting is this. If you wanna fix the system in a democracy or republic, do it from within. They don't wanna do that, so the courts are dictating, violating state law to do it, as far as I can tell, violating multiple precedents, including the state of Georgia, to do it. So if this, if this, this is a dangerous precedent, if it's allowed to go through. I don't think it will. I think if the court system up to this point, that's been any due diligence, looking at case law, we wouldn't be having this conversation today. It would've been already figured out.
That's what, what today's precedent allows?
By having the government be able to tell and direct a political party outside the law and the system in place, you have to put them on the ballot. That is, in fact, what happened. I'm telling you to fight the system from within. If you let this happen, that government precedent is absolutely anti-American at its core since the dawn of this country. Now, if you don't like it for your own personal reasons, fine. I'm probably not changing your mind. You just understand the precedent that that sets, that the government now can violate a private association's freedom of association and direct it to endorse a political candidate if they don't want to. Penny Force here, Commander of the American Legion Post, right? Does anybody tell you who you have to let in?
There were, there were qualifications to be, uh, American Legion member. Those qualifications have varied throughout the years.
But my point is, is somebody came and said, "You know what? Those guys in American Legion, they don't like me. I want you to force them, use your power from the court, to make them put me in." That would absolutely be a violation of that organization's First Amendment rights. Well, it's no different in this case. You may not like it for the reasons you don't like it, and that's fine. But just understand, that's the debate here. And win or lose, that precedent is gonna get set, and once that genie's out of the bottle, it's really hard to put back. So I encourage you to think really close about what that means.
I think the timing of this whole situation can be worse. We as conservatives are facing one of the hardest elections in our lifetimes. Our very, the nation depends on how this next presidential election comes out. If we're doing this little stunt, and that's what I think it is, a stunt, if this been above board, I don't think there would've been near as, as many problems with it as there has been. I know for a fact, I've listened to her several times, Mrs. O'Neill offered Joanna an hour to come on her show and explain why she took the position she took, and she chose not to. Well, I wanna ask you this. Should Joanna decide to run for office one day, heaven forbid she ever did, should she, how is she gonna be vetted when she openly went to a Republican, a Democrat who has run on the Democratic ticket more than once, and solicited him to run against an incoming Republican? Now, how was that fair of you, sixteen?
I'm unaware about that.
Well, you are now.
Well, I don't know the circumstance. I don't know, I don't even know who you're talking about.
Joanna Hill?
No, I know Joanna Hill. I'm talking about the Democrat.
Bernie personally.
Okay.
Okay, how was she fair? How was she fair in the process?
Well, then how does that do with your vetting question this year? Would you pass her?
I probably wouldn't, because I was president of the county Democratic Party for several years, so I'm sure I wouldn't pass it.
No, 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 I'm talking about...
But when the Democrats decided to let men go in the bathroom with little girls, and abortion, we, a means of birth control, that's when I bowed out and became a Republican.
Okay.
So with that history, I'm sure I would, of course, I wouldn't wanna be part, God bless you, for wanting to be a politician and serve your people. You've got one man here that doesn't want the raised SPOSS, because he thinks the property owners should pay extra tax and take care of the things, emergency services, and he's against sewers, because he thinks sewers is a bad thing. We've got a septic system running down the streets in some subdivisions. You don't appreciate the town spending money for recreation. Now, what kind of commissioner are you two gonna be?
I've made myself clear. There was $2 million spent on a ball field in Poplar Springs while there's an empty fire station in Blackstock. I would not have spent that money on that ball field, and I would've gotten that fire station open. That's what I said regarding rec.
Were you critical of the training facility also?
I went out to the training facility, if, if you don't...
Were you critical of it?
I was critical of the cost, but I went out there and I talked with the fire chief. I, I toured the facility. And apparently, it is what it is. It costs what it costs, right? There's not, it's not like you can go to Walmart and go get a fire training center. You know, it is what it is. And our firefighters deserve the best equipment. I've never wavered. I, I didn't say anything about SPOSS, other than it was being, well, yeah. I was, I was forced SPOSS if it was on a shorter cycle and had more transparency. That, I mean, shake your head. You want some more transparency, where your money's getting spent, don't you?
Yeah, we need some transparency from us.
Chuck, can I, can I speak? Can I review what he speaks?
Give me one minute. I just wanna, I wanna answer a question, just so peo, so people will know. The, the $2 million spent on a ball field was approved in the 2019 SPOSS. You can't, you can't convert money that the citizens approved to go on a specific project and use it on a different project. So that's, that was done before most of the commissioners or even on the Board of Commissioners in 2019. So that's where the, the recreation money came from. You can't convert that to a fire hall, no matter how much you want to. It's illegal.
Whoever set that spending priorities was wrong, and it wasn't you.
No, that, listen, I know, but at the time, at the time, we have a fire chief. The fire chief is the expert. The Board of Commissioners are not the expert in these matters. The fire chief did not feel it was, where we have Blackstock, we have equipment there, it's just, it's housed. Right now, the new world of the fire department, you've got a house, house, housing and shower facilities for men and women, so it costs twice as much to build a fire hall as it used to. Now, the fire chief did not want a fire hall to go out there, because quite frankly, the number of calls was so low, and we could respond from other fire halls. Now, here's, here's the other question. We put it on this year's SPOSS to build a fire hall out there, because that area is now growing. Five years later, it's growing. We put that on the SPOSS for, to put a fire station in Blackstock. The one community that voted down SPOSS was Blackstock. So, I mean, that, I don't understand that, how that, you know, how they could justify that. But the fact of the matter is, yes, we are putting a fire hall in Blackstock with this year's, with this, this new SPOSS term. But once we do that, we can't go, "You know what? We really don't wanna put a fire hall out there. We're gonna use that money to, to pave these roads," or whatever. That's not how SPOSS works. SPOSS is the most transparent of any types out there, because you have to, before you even put it on the ballot, you've got to say what you're gonna use that money for. So that's how SPOSS works, and it is confusing. I was confused when I came in. Look, and I, the one thing I didn't do is I didn't condemn or, or berate anybody on the Board of Commissioners, because you don't know what you don't know. And I don't blame people, uh, that, that wanna kinda come in. I'm, look, these people are passionate. They're, these are not bad people. I'm not on the same side they are. I think we made that abundantly clear. But they're good people that are, that are wanting to do what I'm doing. I don't think one of these guys wants to be a leader of Confucian County. They wanna serve Confucian County, and I have to admire that. So, you know, but that's, that is SPOSS and fire departments. That's how that works. I'm sorry, sir.
May I?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes, thank you. So to answer your question, sir, have you, first I must ask you a question. Have you ever read the SPOSS budget? Have you read all three of them in the last 2014, 2009, 2014, and 2019?
Well, I have family I raise. I don't spend my time at the county commission.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Um, so in those three SPOSS cycles, fifteen years, that's a hun, what was budgeted was $176 million. Now, $176 million in fifteen years. Those SPOSS cycles were on a five-year cycle. Those SPOSS cycles were on a five-year cycle. And that fifteen years, that $176 million, the sheriff's department only received $8 million of $176 million. And the budget, that's what was budgeted for the, for the sheriff's office. And you look at the fire department. The fire department, they only received in the three SPOSS cycles that was equated to and budgeted for $176 million, $12 million. So emergency services garnered $20 million out of $176 million over a fifteen-year period.
How about sewers?
Sewers. Sewers for $39 million.
How about your position on sewers?
My position on sewers is, is that what I've gotten from the people in this community that I've talked to, well, you want me to answer here?
I'm listening.
Okay. Is that they said that the development in our county is overwhelming, that the development is out of control. Would you agree to that? The housing development and all of this? Okay. Many people in the county, and I did on, I've got a Facebook page like I told you guys, I did a.
The people that own the property where these apartment complexes are going in, are you saying they don't have a right to develop their property?
I'm not saying they don't have a right. I'm saying they do have a right. Here's the thing. If you do not expand sewage into the county, into these areas to where then developers can do high-density, because they got to have sewage there before they do the high-density development.
Own the industry.
Absolutely. They got to have, I mean, that's not what I'm sa-, see, here's what you're missing.
No, I'm not missing.
Okay. Well, let me speak to these people. Here's what he's missing, is that he's missing that these developments, the developers have us by, or behind our arm, okay? In that, whenever these sewage goes out to these areas, to where our rural county is no longer considered a rural county, all right? And that has an impact on us as far as what, what we are viewed. And if you don't believe me, talk to the school superintendent, he can tell you. It has a big impact on us. And the only way to do that without a, 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 excuse me, a moratorium is to pull back that with sewage in SPOSS. I've looked at it multiple ways, and that's the lowest impact that it would have to our communities. Because if you take and you do a moratorium and you say, "No more development," then guess what? The people that own the restaurants in our community, hurt. The people that own the hardware stores in our community, hurt. The ones that are in our community then suffer from that. But if you take and you pull back and just take that sewage expansion, just expansion that's going out, and focus more on the citizens that are already here, the developments that are already built. And I had a conversation with Mr. Earl Gray about this. Where the one that, that community that's here in Port Obelthorpe. I agree with that. It's not a new development. But if you want to slow down the development, you want to let the services for the fire, the police, the sheriff catch up, the school systems, come on. I mean, if you look, right now, there's a development that's going on. Down here on Boynton, the school board was there at the last meeting, or at the, the, the planning and zoning meeting, and discussing this issue where it's going to overfill the schools. We have to be, in a way, watching all of government in our county.
To be fair, the Boynton was a, it was approved as a 55 and up.
That's right.
So there's not going to be a lot of school age Boynton kids.
They did try to judge it.
They tried to change it, but it did not, it got voted down.
It did not pass. That's right. And there's some control, that is control on development, right there. They told them that they could not, they could not go.
We controlled, anyway, this is getting off into a political speech. This gentleman has been waiting here to answer. Yeah. Yeah, this gentleman needs to be able to ask this question.
Hello. I just want to say that I watch the Judy Show almost every night. Okay? I think, without insulting anybody, that a lot of misinformation on it, in my opinion, like Mr. Warden, in my opinion. He knows, because he calls every morning and every afternoon. I think it's disgraceful when commissioners, I'm sorry, in that way, go on the Judy Show and say this. The citizens of Cudus County are being taken the right away from voting, and that is a false statement. Because no one's taking my right to vote, no one's taking your right to vote. You're just, you're going to not be able to vote as a Republican or a Democrat. You can run as an independent. Everybody's got the right to vote. Your name's going to be on the ballot if you're Republican, running out of independent Democrat. And I think very personally, when eighty-five-year-old ladies call the Judy Show a lot, and you know what I'm talking about, because I hear them all the time, saying, "I'm eighty-five years old, and, and I'm never going to see that hospital being finished." When certain commissioners on the show state, "If SPOSS does not pass, that means you're not going to get your response time to get to you, ma'am." That's a scare tactic for the elderly. And the way I look at it, it's borderline elderly abuse. Scaring somebody, like saying, "If you don't give me $50, you're not going to get your food." That is shameful. And I think a lot of people have distrust with SPOSS. And I'm going to tell you mine. Because when you use $6 million for 49 acres of land on the next exit over and just sees that, that costs close to $6 million, you know what I'm talking about, right? Okay. So that's SPOSS money, that's our money, that's been used over there. When Mr. Harris, you were on Mr. Judy Show, you made a statement that Blackstone Fire Station would cost $600,000 to build. I read it loud and clear, I made a note of it myself. When I had to meet, you know, I've spoken about this, Station Number Two, they have over a million dollars in it. And you said, "Save people's money, tax money." And then I used to say, "To build a new one costs only $600,000." And you think, "Wow, you could have built two of them, or fixed the old one." I said, "That's the problem I have with spending." One of the biggest things that I've talked to a lot of people, and I'm not running for anything. Okay, I'm done. I've worked for American Airlines, United Airlines for many years. I became disabled, my, my back's all broken, now I was in pain. But one thing I know, when you go to executive sessions, executive sessions, people wonder what is being behind doors, what's being shot for, what are you trying to figure out? And you know, somebody on Facebook has posted that our county attorney, Chad Young, is not only our county attorney, that gets paid $500 plus dollars an hour, he also represents all these LLCs of 291 to be exactly, in the county, that he makes deals for the county and makes deals for his buddies. And I did not start.
I would like you to give exact specifics to that.
Well, I'll tell you what. So we have this, I went to the meeting for the school meeting, for example. They raised taxes. They all raised property taxes, and then the school, then right now, they raised their school tax. So they raised it twice, because you could have a chance to roll back. Right? But you didn't.
When the school raised their taxes, we didn't raise taxes.
You approved it, so you raised it. You approved it and go forward, go to raise. And you approved the taxes to go forward. Okay? You could have denied it, or raised it back.
Legally, legally, the Board of Commissioners has to approve the school board's taxes by law unless they are over 20% mills, 20 mills. Then we don't have to, but we have to otherwise.
You raised it twice, basically, the property taxes and then the school tax. Okay?
The city, I think the cities raised their taxes too, so we should get bumped in on that.
But it's in response to say that you did not raise tax twice, because you did.
We did not raise taxes twice.
Oh, that's right. Because the school raised it and you raised it, but you're the ones that approved it. So you raised the tax twice. Don't play semantics with me.
I'm not playing semantics, I'm telling you what the truth is.
Okay, don't play semantics with me.
The Board of Commissioners has no.
1963, I think, the numbers are three. Maybe the numbers are three, and I can, I can add all the good numbers. And I've done a pretty good job of it. Now, let me explain the school property tax, the property purchase of $790,000. You know what property I'm talking about?
I don't.
Okay. So Ring Elementary School bought, this property is elementary school. They bought this property with 5.7 acres by a company called LJ Investments. And you're very familiar with that company.
No, sir, I'm not. You're, I mean, you're in the wrong meeting.
All right, all right. You asked me a question. And I want to answer your question.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
But don't tell me I know about it, because I don't.
LJ Investments purchased the property for $408,000. Turned around, sold to the school system for $790,000. Okay? LJ Investments owned by Jerry Altman, that sits in our planning commissioners board. Our county attorney is Chad Young. LJ Investments agent is Chad Young. You see, the big conflict is like saying, "Hey, you know, we have this piece of land to buy. We can get it for $100,000 to go into executive sessions. We use SPOSS money and pay $400,000, four times more." That's the problem I have with SPOSS, because there's so much dishonesty on it. There's so much overspending that you're not putting what is the right thing to do. You should have what's important, relative important, our children important. That we go one, two, three, to follow what is the most important thing to do.
I agree, I agree. And the Board of Commissioners never went into executive session to spend any school board money. We can't do that. We didn't do it. You're in the wrong meeting.
They use East SPOSS, which tax money.
I'm sorry, East SPOSS.
East SPOSS, right, for the school.
Yeah.
That's.
But again, that's not the Board of, we're talking, you're talking about the Board of Commissioners, but we're off subject here, anyway, we're.
No, you asked me what Chad Young was about, and I told you.
I asked you to give me specifics if there's.
That's why, that's why he represents the developer and he represents the county taxpayers.
Well, if you, if you know something illegal, you should talk to the authorities and go to the school board meeting and call it out. It should be called out, if you know for a fact.
Oh, I've called it out, blatantly.
But I'm telling you, you're talking to the Board of Commissioners. We have no control over that.
You do. You have control of who represents the county attorney. You can fire him and represent, an attorney that is going to do the work for the people. Okay, not an attorney that, that are representative of 291 companies in the county, and they pat each other's on the back and do business with each other, a taxpayer expense. Just like that property that I just mentioned it, okay, was purchased by the top development of Georgia. Okay? Who bought it? The top development of Georgia bought that property for $1.7 million. Who's the lawyer?
What are you talking about?
Forty-nine acres, that's that's it over. Okay, $1.7 million, that's what they paid for it. Plus they spent almost $3 million doing stuff on it. Okay? So who's the lawyer? Chad Young. Who's the CEO for the company? Mike Partain. Who's Mike Partain? The president of the bank, First Bank. Okay? All you need is to wash and dry it, and we'll, we'll, we'll know exactly what's going on. And that's what the problem, the people problem is, because they see all this money going everywhere. And people get aggravated because they're not using, being used properly. That's what I said. Now, I have one final question, all right? If you have somebody that goes for a loan, for a half loan, for thirty-year-old, and I, at first, everybody will agree with this. If you have bad credit, do you qualify for that loan? You do not, shouldn't. Okay. Same thing as daddy. Same thing for public parties, them property. Okay? If you do not follow the rules to be that, it's only a couple of people that make their choices. And I've been there before, I know exactly what it is. And I had to pay higher interest because I was a single parent, you know? And, and that's just the way it is. It's just the way our world evolves. Now, I have one final question.
Okay.
Right? If somebody within government has something illegal on them, or convicted of something or not, should they continue running as, as a government official? Or they should step aside and give the place to somebody that be taking care of the people?
If they have something illegal on them?
If they've done something illegal, and they get caught doing something illegal, okay, a, a, a family member or anything, should they abstain themselves and move aside?
I don't know the, the family.
It's a, it's a, just a question, open question.
What's an open question? Did you say if a family, them or a family member?
No, a family member, anybody. Because, okay, you shouldn't think they should move.
I don't think if a family member does something, you're not responsible. I mean, you're not responsible for your, if you've got a brother.
Because I heard you on Judy Show.
Okay.
Naming some people for something about the Walmart. Okay? A member. And you've mentioned it. So you just contradicted what I was trying to tell you, to tell you. Okay, because, oh, yes, you did. Because you said it on the Judy Show, exactly, about a, 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 a precedent that something happened to a family member for Walmart. And I'm going to not go repeat other respects. But you know.
I don't, yeah, we're.
Yes.
I never said the gentleman, look, I don't want to bring that up. The gentleman's not even running right now, so there's no reason to bring it up.
I know, I know what I'm talking about.
I know exactly what you're talking about, because I got.
He said, wait a minute. He said, "What on my show about Walmart?"
About a candidate's wife shoplifting at Walmart.
Nobody ever said that on my show, because I remarked and said, "Do not say this and ruin that family." Don't say something.
He said something about shoplifting at Walmart. This was on Facebook.
It's on Facebook too. It's on Facebook too.
Let me tell you something. The school system is not the commission. They operate independently. They raise their own taxes, they have nothing to do with it. And when you write your check for taxes, you give the school system about 83% of it, not to Cudus County.
That's right, you're right. You're right about that, but they did the vote for whether or not.
Sir, you've asked a question. Sir, sir.
I agree that Cudus County charges the.
Sir, you, you're dragging up everything you can think of. Please, we've got a gentleman here that wants to speak. You, you've got to speak.
Can you just be a little more clear about the threat? You just. You just told me, "I've seen your Twitter, you need to be careful." Okay, so, I would, somebody calm down, please, because Mario did that. And I know Mario. Don't tell them to calm down, very calm. I really appreciate the candidates being here. Jimmy, Nick, Denny. Chuck's not a candidate, but thank you for putting this together. Um, Denny, are you coming back, or you heading out? Oh, no, no worries. I just didn't know if you were leaving. How to ask my question. Um, I would appreciate if the answer to this question could just be a show of hands, because this is, this is gone long, right? Um, could you please raise your hand if you believe that a constitutional republic is a form of democracy? Hands. Sorry. Okay. Thank you so much. Um, could you please raise your hand if elected government officials, if, excuse me, if you believe that elected government officials in a constitutional republic represent the people? Could you raise your hand if elected government officials represent people in a constitutional republic? Wonderful. So just to be clear, Jimmy and Nick, you did not raise your hand when I asked if you believe that a constitutional republic was a form of democracy? That's interesting. Okay. Could you please raise your hand if you believe that unelected private party officials represent people in the same format as elected government officials à la a constitutional republic?
They weren't elected.
They weren't elected. They can't, they can't, yeah, okay, interesting. They're not public officials, yeah, okay. Um, could you, and anybody else in this room, feel free, raise your hand. Um, Sunny Perdue was the first Republican governor in Georgia since the Reconstruction. Big deal. Could you raise your hand if you voted for Sunny Perdue?
I worked with this gentleman.
Oh, congratulations.
Yes, because I did not want this flag right here.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Oh, you didn't want the flag?
I did not want it. I did not want it.
The state's flag you didn't want in the room. Oh, I see what you're saying, you didn't want it because you knew that Sunny Perdue, yeah, yeah. Sunny Perdue was elected as a Democrat, and in 1998, switched his party to Republican and then stayed for how long? Long time, right? He's still, what is he now, or he's the head of the border regions, head of the school system? Do you believe that Sunny Perdue should never have been a Republican? Yes or no?
To be honest, I'm not real familiar with Sunny Perdue.
Okay.
But, let me just say this.
No, no, it was just a yes or no. No, it's just a yes or no, it's my question, Jimmy.
If he, if he changed and, and brings Republican values, that's the, that's the key.
So if he changes and brings Republican values, that's the key?
Embraces them.
Oh, embraces them, I see.
Sunny Perdue told, told me that he didn't like the storms flag either.
Yeah.
So he fixed it.
Okay.
Didn't I know that history?
A lot of history, right?
Tell me just to raise one.
Okay, all right, cool. So just, again, I would, I want to just end with the first question I started with, just to double-check, because I know you at least are running in my district, and you are running for chair, which I live in the county. So just to triple-check here. You, Jimmy, and you, Nick, where do not believe that a constitutional republic is a form of democracy? Is that correct? Yes or no?
I'm going to answer this now. It is a republic that uses a democratic process.
Okay, we went long, and I appreciate everybody here, I appreciate the, the call and allowing people to get their point of view out. So I think this is where we're going to end it tonight, and I appreciate you coming out.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Chuck, for letting me.
Thanks, thanks, Chuck. You know, I didn't know whether I would be invited, but I was going to come anyway, and I appreciate you inviting me.